There are a few items that I would like to bring to your attention. The PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, has provided some, if you will, additional guidance that we are definitely in alignment with. Ms. Bookman, if we could click on the link Determining Instructional Models, just wanted to bring something to everyone's opinion. And if you scroll down, you will note that in this additional guidance, and all of this is available on our website. And keep scrolling, Ms. Bookman, and it should also be the link, I believe, was provided in the chat. So if you look at this chart that's coming up right here, you will see that it provides you with the level of community transmission in the county, the incidence rate per 1,000 residents, and/or the percent positivity within the most recent seven days, as well as recommended instructional models. So right now, we are in the moderate range as a county. And so if you read from left to right, the first column does indicate moderate. And then if you go all the way over to the right, you will see that the recommended instructional model indicates blended learning or full remote learning model. And so in alignment with our recommendation, the board approval, we are proceeding with the full remote learning model at this particular time. Thank you, Ms. Bookman. We can go back to the actual presentation. In addition to that, we actually received some additional guidance this morning. Although this does not impact what we're doing, we didn't want to share with the board some recent updates that we received. And this came through the American Academy of Pediatrics, but also in alignment with what the Pennsylvania Department of Education is indicating, a reference to cloth face coverings. We are now indicating that everyone must wear a face covering at all times, except for these following instances. And you will see what those instances are indicated here in bulletproof form. If you're eating or drinking, and it's important to note that it still specifies at least six feet apart. If wearing of the face mask is unsafe, or you are taking a face covering break. And it clearly indicates that it should be no longer than 10 minutes, and it still is emphasizing at least six feet apart. So those are just some additional updates that we have received to date. Secondly, the Del Valle League for Athletics has met. And one of the things that we are in alignment with is all of the other guidance, stating that at this time, all of our athletic events are postponed. We will continue to review the data as it relates to COVID-19 and cases within this area, and follow the guidance that's being provided and come back with further recommendations. But I did want to let the community, as well as our board, know that all of the leagues in the Del Valle did come together and agree on the statement that you see before you. So at our last update, it was important to note that we were still, at that time, accepting cyber applications. And so if we click on this link, you will see what our final numbers represent. So at that last meeting, we had 527 applications. Since that time, that number has grown by 168, for a total of 695. And I'm in that first box where it says total registrants as of 8/15/20. We are definitely analyzing this information. So everyone that has submitted an application, we are reaching out to them to confirm their intent. So we have sent 695 emails. We've received about 259 responses for a response rate of 37%. And we will continue to communicate with those individuals. And as you'll note, that 187 of the 259 respondents are confirming their participation in cyber. Seventy-two of those individuals have declined at this point. They will be a part of our regular, if you will, online support. So we will continue to reach out to these families and utilize this information in conjunction with information that we have received from our teacher survey. Thank you, Ms. Bookman. And the last few points do not have an attachment, so I will speak to those. The low incidence population, you may recall, board members, that last week, we were having conversations around how to support our low incidence population, which is a small population of students who require services, some of them pretty, I'll just say, specific support that we need to provide to those students. And so what we had identified by school was the number of students who would be impacted. There were five schools that were involved in that process. We did, over the past weekend and since that time of our meeting, we did have conversations with teachers, because this was a population of students we wanted to be served face-to-face, realizing that they would require some additional support. We received mixed reviews based upon our conversations with staff. And so where we can provide the face-to-face service, we will. We will follow up with those families to make sure that that's something that they still request and want to participate in. And where we cannot, we will make sure that we are providing the level of services to the greatest extent possible that we can in a virtual setting. So I wanted to provide that update on the low incidence population, because I do know that there was some questioning and dialogue around that particular item during our last meeting. And the last item speaks to reopening concerns. And just want to read, I actually wrote a statement in reference to this, because, as you can imagine, since our last meeting, I have received numerous emails and some text messages, et cetera. So, "Over the course of the last week, I've been provided with a myriad of concerns related to teachers coming into the building, how to best support our low incidence population of students, and family concerns regarding their children being educated virtually. The decisions that we are charged with making at this time are not taken lightly, especially when dealing with the health and safety of students and staff. What I've tried to do was follow the lead of our health experts. After meeting and hearing Dr. Brennan, the medical expert, speak to us on August 5th, concerns were still evident by some, specifically related to teachers being in their classrooms, providing direct instruction to students who would be at home. The dialogue continued on August 12th during our education committee meeting. During the meeting, there were mixed reviews. Some teachers raised their objections, and some teachers commented that they were glad to go back to the building as you reviewed and looked at the chat. Some parents wanted their children to be supported face-to-face. However, in several emails that I've received, concerns were raised by parents who questioned the level of support their child would receive by someone who did not want to be in the school building. All of the concerns raised definitely have validity and are not necessarily in alignment with each other. This pandemic is very serious, and each of us are operating at different levels of comfort. In an effort to address the concerns and realizing that not everyone will be pleased with whichever decision is made, I have decided that teachers will have the option to work in the school building or from home. This will ensure that all of our students will be supported. And you may be asking how? We will be outlining expectations for when working from home, so that it is clear that students are to be engaged in instruction via synchronous or asynchronous learning between 9:00 and 2:00. When the expectations are not being met, we will be conducting individual follow-up to ensure that we can address any deficiencies that students are experiencing as a result of us being in this remote virtual environment." Ms. Bookman, that concludes my comments. Board members, we can go directly into the policies, and then we can open it up for questions or comments. So I believe the next slide highlights, if you will, policies. And I'm going to allow Ms. Seward to walk us through this information.
Go for it, Ms. Seward.
Hello, everyone. Okay, I'm unmuted now. Okay, can we go to the next slide, please? I am so sorry, I have barking dog here. Okay. Policy 217, graduation requirements are being recommended. To suspend the policy using the rationale that, in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, the district is recommending this policy be suspended for flexibility purposes, so that we are able to evaluate students toward graduation, but still seek and follow the guidance of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Next slide, please. The next two are facilities-related. The first one being a recommendation to suspend the policy for 7:05, to make sure that we're addressing concerns about the usage of our buildings. And as we are going virtual, we will not have students inside of the building, thus reducing the amount of people in a given area or a building, which is specified by CDC guidelines, as well as the usage of our buildings by outside organizations. Again, making sure that we are not exposing others' people to a situation where they are indoor facilities or using our outdoor facilities in a way that is not in line with the health and safety regulations as guided by the CDC. Next slide, please. The last two, the rationale is the same for both. The school calendar, as well as the school day. Policies 803 and 804, again, to allow for flexibility for changing instructional days and working staff due to the unpredictable nature of the COVID-19 pandemic, not knowing if, God forbid, there'd be another time where we have to quarantine again. Because the future is so unknown, we're recommending that there be flexibility in our ability to manage the school calendar, as well as the school day. And that concludes, thank you. This, again, was the second reading of our recommendation to suspend the policy. And I will open it up for discussion.
If I may, school board directors, do you have any questions for Dr. B. Coats or Ms. Seward?
Yes, I have a question in regards to, I believe, policy 705 in regards to facility usage. How does that impact employment of our facilities? Does that allow for any layoffs? Or does that impact them in any way if we are suspending full use of the facilities?
I actually will give that to Mr. Cuff, if you would.
I don't believe so. The facilities will still have to be addressed and cleaned. We still may have some employees that are going to come in. There's still the potential for some students that may come in that's still on the table, too. So we still have to have that option going forward.
Okay, thanks.
Any other school board directors? Okay, and now, anyone in the public? I just see one hand raised, and that's Ms. Tax. Can you turn Ms. Tax on, please, Mr. Cuff?
Hello. I just wanted to thank Dr. B. Coats and the school board for giving us the option to work at home. That relieves a lot of teachers' anxiety, especially mine. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I'm very grateful.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tax. Any other attendees? I see nothing in chat. All right. Next up, we have two motions for action. I'll read the first one. It's on page two. Special motions for action. One, adoption plans for the 2020-21 instructions. School building reopening plans for the 2021 school year have been redeveloped. The administration recommends the following action by the Board of School Directors. Motion, Part A, to move to online virtual instruction for students beginning September 14, 2020. The administration will continue to work with local health experts in reviewing COVID-19 data. Update the Board of School Directors and provide further recommendations as to when the district should move to a hybrid model of instruction. Updates will be provided to the board every four weeks. And an online virtual model should be implemented until the first quarter, end of the first quarter, November 2020. Further updates regarding the model were provided at the education committee meeting held on August 12, 2020. B, registration for the cyber academy will continue through the established deadline of August 14, 2020. Families will be contacted regarding next steps. C, moving to a virtual online model will delay the implementation of all extracurricular activities and sports competitions until November 2020. Voluntary activities, workout sessions, and practices among students can still occur utilizing the same screening process we've been utilizing this summer. Again, all sessions will be voluntary. All scrimmages or team competitions versus other school districts are postponed. Please note, in an abundance of caution, we are also postponing all low-contact extracurricular activities and sports as well. May I have a move in a second?
A move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tong and Ms. Hopkins. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors on this motion? Seeing none, any questions from the public on this motion? We have two questions. Jeff, can you grab them, Ms. Walton and Ms. Ryder? These should be questions on this specific motion. Ms. Walton, go ahead.
Yes, I think it was in Part A where it talked about recommending that we're going virtual up and through, up till the end of the first quarter, to be, I guess, looked at every four weeks from the beginning of the school year to November. I guess my question is, could we possibly go back before November? Or are you looking at the guidelines every four weeks to determine if we could actually go back a little bit earlier than November, the end of the first quarter?
Dr. B. Coats?
So we are going to be looking at the information every four weeks. In the event that we implement or go to the hybrid model, we will still need time to plan. So it's a strong possibility that we would not start that until the beginning of the second quarter. So again, we are going to be looking at the data to see what it's telling us. And then, as long as that data is continuing to trend in the right direction, we will have to start preparing for that transition, if you will.
Thank you, Ms. Walton.
Okay. Thank, I just actually wanted to follow up real quick. Dr. Brennan was very informative, but I was wondering if there are a group of individuals that are on board with his idea of what's going on? Or do you consult varying opinions of the, you know, are other individuals being considered and talked to so that you have a variety of opinions of situations?
Yes, most definitely. We actually, when we meet with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, we have the County Health Department Director on. There's also Dr. Rubin from the Children's Hospital of Pennsylvania, as well as Dr. Brennan. So it's not just one viewpoint. There's several, I'll just say, experts in the health field arena who are definitely supporting and guiding the actions of the superintendents in Delaware County.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Ms. Ryder? She disappeared. Okay.
She's there, Jennifer.
You're muted, Ms. Ryder.
I'm muted.
No, she's, no. Well, if you get back, Ms. Ryder, just let us know. Any, oh, there you are, Ryder. I saw you.
I told you she was there.
I know, but she's not showing up on my list.
But we couldn't hear her. There was a problem with.
All right, well, Ryder, when you get back, let us know. Wave furiously in your box. Any other questions from the Board of School Board Directors? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I need to hear you guys.
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, there we go. All right, next motion. Is that the only motion, Jeff? Yeah, C H two. All right, here we go to our regular agenda. Thank you, thanks, Jeff. I just need to find my own, because hers is too small. Okay. Sorry. May I have a motion? All right, I'm sorry. Next week, we will have approval on the minutes. We have community relations minutes to approve, and then committee of the whole on August 17. Community relations. A1, school reopening information, I just read that. School start day is September 14. Kindergarten orientation is the 14th and the 15th. A2, empowerment experience opportunity available for the middle school and high school students. So this is no cost. The empowerment, I'll read some of it, because it's that important. This is for grades 7 to 12. You will have the opportunity to participate in an empowerment experience virtual program to address feelings about race relations, racial injustice, and how students are impacted. Empowerment experience consists of three 90-minute interactive virtual experiences, offering a safe space and opportunity for students to be honest and process and express their feelings, to be provided with the tools to allow for reconciliation and become positive change agents in the community. There is no cost to William Penn School District students, but registration is required. Students must commit to all three sessions. Sessions will begin at the end of August. The empowerment experience, entitled Forward Focus Better Together, will be provided by the Potts Group LLC. Interested students should contact their guidance counselor for more information and to register. Okay. A3, Penwood High School seniors spearhead voter registration drive. Victoria Monroe and Jaden Odom, two Penwood High School rising seniors, have organized a voter registration scheduled to be held August 31, 2020. The drive will take place at Evans Elementary School from 12 to 5, and at Penwood High School Green Avenue Campus. Register in front of the gymnasium from 12 to 6. Everyone, please applaud these students in this effort to register, and please register to vote. A4, online registration process for the 2021 school year. You can find that page at williampennsd.org/departments/registration, or go right to our website, and you'll see it there. Free summer meals for children continue to August 31. They're available at Alden, Colwin, Darby, East Lansdowne, Lansdowne, and Yaden. And we'll have details about food during school time in September also. A6, Farmers to Families Food Box Program. The Common Market continues to deliver food boxes until Thursday, August 27. They're available Thursday at Evans and Penwood Middle between 11 and 1 o'clock. There are no income requirements. Registration is not required, and you do not have to be school age. Thank you, Common Market. Any questions on the community relations agenda?
Yeah, Jennifer Troy. So I commend the students regarding the voter registration. I was just wondering, are we doing anything on behalf of the district regarding the census? Especially when those dollars affect school districts. I was wondering, can we or will we be doing anything about the census?
We do not have anything planned right now, but I'm making a note of that, Ms. Hopkins.
Thank you, sir.
Can someone please post the August 24 agenda in chat, please? Thank you, Mr. Dinenza. You read my mind. Any other questions? All right, there's no actionable items, correct, David? So we're good. All right, education, since Ms. Boykins is not here this evening. B1, staffing plus. B2, Mercy Fitzgerald Hospital. B3, social signals LLC. B4, school-wide comprehensive Title I plan approval. B5, the revised William Penn School District calendar. And B6, adoption of a Keystone exam waiver for 2019-2020. Do I have any questions from the school board directors on the education agenda? Can someone also post the new revised calendar in chat, please? Do any attendees have any questions on the education agenda? Seeing none, moving forward. I, sorry. Mr. Wright, can you take personnel, please?
Mute, Mr. Wright.
Thank you for that post, Mr. Dinenza.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. I, C1, resignation. A, support staff. C2, recent appointment professional staff. C3, appointment professional staff. B, Title III Coordinator for English Language Learner 2020-21 school year, $10,000. C, technology tool and curriculum use, Title I funds, $25 an hour. D, special education ABA boot camp instructional assistant, $15 an hour. C4, change in assignment. C5, leave of absence. And that concludes personnel report.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Wright missed one, that was retirement.
Yes, okay, retirement.
No, he, he read that.
He said resignation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors on the Personnel Committee agenda? Hearing none, any questions on the Personnel Committee agenda from attendees? Okay. All right. Moving along. Property Committee agenda, Mr. Tong?
There are no items currently on the Property Committee. But I do want to thank the folks who produced a wonderful meeting at our last property meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Tong. Budget and Finance Committee agenda. E1, Treasurers Report. E2, List of Bills. Any questions from the school board directors on the Budget Committee? Great, any questions from the public on the Budget Agenda? Okay. Ms. Hopkins, Policy Committee Agenda, please?
I am. F1, Suspension of Board Policies. This is our second reading. Policies number 217 to be suspended. Graduation requirements, 705. Facilities and Workplace Safety, 707. Use of School Facilities, 803, School Calendar, and 804, School Day, which was all presented.
Eight oh three, school calendar and eight oh four, school day, which was all presented by Ms. Seward.
Great. All right, thank you. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors on the Policy Committee Agenda? Hearing none, any questions from attendees on the Policy Agenda? Okay. All right, I'm going to hit a couple of questions in the chat. This one's for you, Dr. B. Coats. Last week, Dr. B. Coats said that some extracurriculars that can be done virtually could start in September. While we're virtual, is this still the case in light of this motion? Specifically, things like student council, honor society, that would be good to start virtually so we can hit the ground running when we go back in person. Oh, I see your question, your answer. You're on mute.
Thank you. The activities can be offered virtually, so the motion does not negatively impact the startup.
Great, thank you, Dr. B. Coats. I'm going to read the meetings. I, I try again, I'm sorry, any other comments from anyone? Okey dokey, the following meetings will be held via Zoom. And these are after next Monday's meeting, so a little heads up. Tomorrow, we have Personnel, correct? 6:30 on Zoom, you can get the login on the website. Then next Monday, the 24th, we have a board meeting. Then a school climate subcommittee on Wednesday, September 2nd at 4:30. And then if Dr. B. Coats doesn't manage to get some meetings in there, Monday, September 21st, the Committee of the Whole at 6:30. And then Monday, September 28th at 6:30, the business meeting. Anything else? Okay, we'll see you next Monday or tomorrow for the Personnel Meeting. Mask up, wash up, we have no one to spare. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.